Good evening. I'd like to open tonight's meeting of the Queensbury Zoning Board of Appeals, Wednesday, April or August 19th. If you've not been here before, our procedure is fairly simple. There should be a schedule on the back table there. We'll call each case up, read the case into our record, have the applicant present his case, we'll question the applicant. If a public hearing has been advertised, then we'll open the public hearing and take input from the public. In our case tonight, we also invite people to call in from the outside. The number is (518) 761-8225. After the public hearing, then we'll close the public hearing and poll the board, see how they feel about the case, and then we'll proceed from there. From a safety standpoint, I'd like to point out there are exits to the north there where you came in. There are two exits in back me on either side to the east, and then there's an exit to the south in the far corner over there. Before we get started, first I'd like to get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 22nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2020.
So we have a motion. Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Call the vote.
Mr. Kew?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Henke?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Okay, our first application is from Kathy Sanders, 119 Birdsall Road. It's case AV6 2020. We've been here before, so we're just going to read in the changes.
The applicant proposes to renovate an existing 1,232 square foot home with a second story and an open deck addition to an existing deck. The home is an existing floor area of 3,971 square feet. The proposed is 5,513 square feet. The project includes site work for retaining walls on land, repairs of shoreline retaining wall, landscaping, stormwater management, and a new septic system. Revision includes additional green space and a reduced bedroom size on the second floor. Relief is sought for the FAR setback and permeability. Site plan for the new air floor area is a C A and a hard surfacing within 50 feet of the shoreline.
So just one additional thing. We'd ask that for each application, only a single person come to the podium. When you're done at the podium, please, there should be some wipes up there, please wipe the podium down and the microphone. And so, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So.
State your name for the record first.
Exactly. My name is Jeff Reddick. I'm here from Redbud Design Landscape Architecture, and I'm part of a team that's representing Kathy Sanders. Clark Wilkinson from Environmental Design Partnership is here as well, and then Pam Sembrook, who is Kathy Sanders' neighbor, is also here. Unfortunately, Kathy cannot be here tonight because she has, she has to be restricted at home because she had traveled upstate and has to extend her two-week quarantine. So I'm, my goal here right now is to present to you the overall changes and what we've done with the project, and then Clark is going to come up and explain some of the more detailed components of the project. So, in essence, yes, we were here before the board back in June, and we listened at length to, we presented our project and then took the feedback that you had given us to say, hey, look, there's some things that we'd really like to see you change. With that, the owner went back to Williams &amp; Williams, the designers, and pulled together some changes to the overall house. But before I get there, I'd like to explain a little bit of background on the property. The owner bought this property with understanding that it was already a pre-existing non-conforming lot, had very limited overall green space with the road that cuts across it, large asphalt driveway that's already there, three-car garage, et cetera, rusted metal roof, non-conforming dock, buried oil tank, arsenic retaining walls down by the lake shore, and then a detached third bay garage, which one of those bays actually acts as a small business for a gentleman by the name of Richard Phillips, who operates a small landscaping business out of the building with no, and he has no relationship to the owner, and there's also no financial relationship that happens between either of them. So she basically just lets him use this third bay of the garage for his purposes. In general, the owner has always had a desire to renovate this property for two reasons. One, to bring family back to the property. She's getting to the point where grandkids are coming, and she really wants this property to be that space where everybody can come to. Two, she's always had an interest in protecting the lake and protecting the environment. So from day one, we had designed some of those components into the project, which you'll see as I continue the presentation. But her, her desire to protect the environment and build the house was a two-part scenario. So in essence, what she is creating right now is a second-story house with a three-bedroom where currently it's a one-story bedroom, or a one-bedroom house. The architectural styling of the house is in keeping with the lakefront and all the, and majority of the properties on the lake. And she's doing some of these improvements, for instance, removing the old antiquated septic system, obviously building the home up to current standards with fully insulated walls and windows, and then removing also approximately a 50-year-old buried oil tank and converting over to propane. As part of the project, from a stormwater management perspective, we had maintained the design to be under a 5,000-square-foot disturbance threshold, basically keeping us in a minor project, but still she wanted to do things to help protect the lake and the general environment. So we designed for boulder retaining walls to replace arsenic laden retaining walls that are currently there. We've removed existing decking that actually extends onto the neighbor's property to the north. We've incorporated plantings along the shorelines and a rain garden near the shorelines so that we can back drain everything from the shore to that rain garden, and then also pitch everything from the upper lawn areas down into that rain garden as well. And we've introduced a lot of plant materials that are all either inclusive or appropriate for rain gardens and/or just the general region. So, in essence, that's the overall big picture of the project. We've, actually, I'm sorry, there's one thing that I'd also like to extend is part of the project, we've increased the permeability by removing a significant portion of asphalt, taking it from 55% to 65%, basically a 10% increase over what's existing now. And then the reduction of the architectural changes to the house, the owner worked at length with Williams &amp; Williams, the designers of the house, to remove the original variance, the height variance that we had originally requested. So at this point, I'd like to, unless you have any specific questions for me, I'd like to turn it over to Clark Wilkinson from Environmental Design Partnership to go through some of the details of all the variance requests that we're asking for.
Sure.
Thank you.
You can throw that right, it was passed right there.
Thank you, Jeff. Again, for the record, my name is Clark Wilkinson with the Environmental Design Partnership, representing Kathy Sanders on this project. I wanted to go back through some of the variances that we discussed last month, or actually, it's two months ago now, and the board had some very specific concerns about them. But first, I wanted to touch on the fact that, as Jeff said, this is an existing non-conforming lot, and I wanted to reiterate the fact that if we did nothing today, three variances exist on a property just doing nothing, and that is the side setbacks. Both of them are less than the required. The waterfront setback is at 47 feet, which is three foot short of the requirement, and the green space is 55%, and that's supposed to be 75%. So again, going in, we're already through, we already need three variances even if we do nothing. So with that in mind, again, we presented the original variance on June 17th. We requested a height variance of between two and three feet. I don't remember the exact number. We requested the FAR of 0.3 versus 0.22 as required. We, we kept the shoreline setback at 47. The sideline setback, we increased to six feet rather than nine and a half existing, and that was to get a deck to go around the side of the house and be able to access the shoreline. And I'd also like to say that we, we've had, at that last meeting, we also had, I believe, three or four letters from adjoining owners that were in favor of the project at that time. I believe that we listened to the board, and you had some really good comments, and we came back again. We've increased that green space by 10%, which is, I think, doing very well. She's eliminated the actual driveway up to the house. We now park in the garage and have to walk to the house, which, again, most of the times spent here is going to be during the summer, and in the wintertime, you just make sure you've got clear paths, and you should be able to get to the house without a problem. By eliminating that pavement and some additional items here and there, we were able to get that 10% up. So now we're asking for the green space variance, but instead of being the existing 55%, it's now 65%. So we feel that that's a win for the neighborhood, for the board, and for the project. The shoreline setback, that is now increased to a 46-foot setback, and again, it's because of the deck, which the deck and stairs are needed to eliminate an existing pathway that actually is on the adjoining neighbor's property, that you have to walk onto the adjoining neighbor's property to get to the bottom stairs currently to be able to access this property's waterfront. So what we did was we incorporated stairs into that so that they could go directly, so that we could eliminate encroaching on the neighbor's property to get the access on our waterfront. So that's the reason that's increased, and because the waterfront curves, even though the deck is straight, it added one foot to the, to the variance that we're requesting. The last one, or the last two are the sideline setbacks. Again, that same deck that we talked about, that made it go from a nine-and-a-half foot to a six-foot side setback on that neighbor's side to the north, which is Kenbrook, which they're here today. And then the sideline setback to the south, actually, we increased that by .2 feet. Went from like 10 and a half or 10.6 to 10.8 feet. The last one we're asking for tonight is the FAR floor area ratio. We did a reduction in the second-floor bedroom. We listened to some of the things that you were saying about that. We also investigated how else we could reduce this floor area ratio. One of the suggestions made by one of the board members was maybe decrease that third floor somewhat, go to a pump-type system. We looked at all those different options, and based on the amount of money that would add cost to the pumping system, to having a backup generators and all that stuff, the decisions were made to not go that route, but to decrease some of the floor area. We also took off the shed, or proposing to take the shed off of the back of the garage, which counted as floor area ratio. We gained three or four hundred square feet there, and with the reduction in the second floor, and that reduction, we're now down to a .28 from the .30 that we had last month, or two months ago. So the plan before you tonight reflects what we feel is a reasonable and well-thought-out plan encompassing this board's comments from two months ago, and our client has made some important, both financially and project-specific, decisions to reduce the overall impacts of the project. So we're here tonight and asking you and hoping that you will be in favor of this project to approve it based on the changes that we've made. And I'll take, open it up to any questions or comments.
So was there another presenter, or, okay, so you're the final one?
I believe so.
Okay. So do we have questions of the applicant? Seeing no questions, there is a public hearing advertised, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing and invite anybody that's watching on TV to call in at (518) 761-8225. And if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Thank you. Thank you to the board. Thank you for your service, especially under the times of COVID. It's most appreciated. My name is John Sembrook. I live in the house directly next door to Kathy and this proposed project. We're at 121 Birdsall Road. My wife and I, Pam, have been in that property about 20 years. She's part of the Milne family. She's been on the lake her entire life. My, my entire adult life, I've spent time on the lake, so I know it very well, like the back of my hand. Just a quick reminder, compared to the existing property, let me start with the following. I'm fully in support of this project. I, I know the design team has, has made a bunch of professional changes related to the feedback that they heard here a few months ago. I appreciate that. I, I want to remind this board the following facts. Compared to the existing property, there are numerous improvements. Removing a 50-year-old oil tank, a new septic system further away from my well, Kathy's well, and the lake. An improved side setback. There's currently a walkway on our property leading down to the lake. That is now removed. Improved stormwater management. They're exceeding what's required to manage flow from the road across a lawn down an already existing poorly terraced property with a more modern terrace situation, getting rid of railroad ties in favor of natural rock, so many improvements, things that, that we think are right for Glen Lake. The permeability is being improved dramatically. There is a ton of blacktop on this property. There's an old shed that spans a three-car garage just about. That's being removed, a net positive. And, and at the end of the day, it will be a new structure, which is an improvement for both the neighborhood, the town, the tax base, et cetera. As I see it, the only ask, the only, and it's even a minor ask, is to the FAR based on all the, and I realize every time you guys look at a property, it's a unique property with a unique set of constraints and so forth, but we're really only talking about a FAR in terms of like material change here, and the height restriction's been removed. This, this seems like, respectfully, this seems like as close to a no-brainer as, as you can get when you look at what's there and what's being proposed. As a neighbor, and again, I stand here representing the neighborhood perspective, there are four, five, six other letters that are on file. As a neighbor, we feel it is both fair and right to approve this project. It, it is, it is fair to Kathy. There's been an incredible amount of work. This is a great project. It'll be great for the lake. And frankly, it's right for the neighbors to see this improvement go forward. So if there are further questions, I'm happy to take them, but I, I really do feel like I'm representing the views of the letters and all the neighbors that sit on Birdsall Road and beyond on Glen Lake. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? So we had some written correspondence before. Is there any additional?
There was one additional letter, but it was from Mrs. Sembrook. Do you want to?
That would be my wife.
Can I figure, do you want me to read this in as well?
Yes.
"I am in full support of the building project of our neighbor and friend Kathy Sanders. I live in the adjacent property at 121 Birdsall Road and encourage her to buy the property so she can be next to us. She and her family have been coming to stay with us on Lake for 30 years. It has been her dream to have a home close to us. We jokingly call it the grandparent trap. Modifications to the house are necessary to make the house comfortable for her family to come and visit. She is making significant improvements to the property by removing a 46-year-old buried oil tank, significant risk to neighbor's wells and drinking water, installing a new septic system, installing stormwater management, including rain gardens that were not there before, and landscaping the lakefront to protect the lake environment. All of these are major improvements to the lake environment. As she is building on the existing foundation, two of the variances that are being required are due to existing circumstances. Kathy has eliminated the height variance by altering the plans for the addition, and she's improving the, the FAR and permeability by eliminating a portion of the existing paved driveway and a large portion of the garage storage area on the back of the garage. Given that it is a non-conforming lot, she is doing her best to improve the FAR. She has also asked, she has also improved another situation by eliminating an existing walkway that was over our property line by a few feet. The improvements she is making to this property are significant, and we kindly ask that you approve the application and necessary variances required. Many lake properties in Queensbury and on Glen Lake have unique characteristics and constraints. We appreciate all the work put forth by the board to protect both lake and town. In this proposal, we feel the project now meets all reasonable attempts to address prior board comments and will measurably improve the environment. Once again, we kindly ask that you approve the application, and thank you for your service." Pamela Sembrook, 121 Birdsall Road.
Anything, anything else? So we've got our two minutes. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and poll the board, and I'm going to start with Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the way that, that this project is presented, it's, it's an improvement, and it benefits the lake. I don't think they're asking for all that much. I, I would be in favor of the way it's presented.
Michelle?
I appreciate the improvements you've made so far, but I'm still concerned about the floor area ratio. I think it's far too substantial still, and I think basically the lot is too small for this size project.
Jim?
Yeah, I think the, you know, the improvements that have been made since the last meeting are substantial, but at the same time, the request for 1,200 square feet of excessive buildout, to me, is still way over the top. I think you're still going to have to look at removing a bedroom, or removing part of the sun, sunroom, or combining some of the effects that you have in there between living, dining, and entertaining, so I think you still have to move it.
Kathy?
I was primarily concerned with height, I believe, and permeability has been improved, so I'm maybe in favor at this point.
Roy?
Yeah, I'm satisfied that the applicant's made significant changes to this application, and I was also concerned about the height. That's been eliminated. I'm happy with the permeability that's been laid down right now, so I'd be in favor of the application.
John?
Yeah, there's no doubt there's a hell of an improvement on that property with the oil tank removed, new stormwater, new septic. I don't have any concerns with the setback. Permeability's, you know, definitely the best they could do there with the rain gardens and that, but I do have a concern a little bit with the FAR variance. I, I'm, you know, I, 1,200, they're looking at 1,201 feet above the allowable amount. I think they can do something there and still make it a very usable house. So I would not be in favor as is.
So the way I view this is that my main concern was the request for the height variance, and I'm impressed that the applicant made the changes required to eliminate that particular request. I think we gained quite a bit by okaying this particular project, and so I am in favor of it. So at this particular point, Ron, could you make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to make a motion that we approve area variance AV6-2020, Kathy Sanders, 119 Birdsall Road. As per the document prepared by staff, we find that there is not an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor a detriment to nearby properties, as basically they're building on the, on the, on the existing footprint. Feasible alternatives to this, we find that they're really limited. They have been considered, and they've been included to minimize the request. The requested variance could be, could be considered substantial because of the, the small size of the property, although there is not an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. We could also suggest that the alleged difficulty could be, is actually self-created as they want to double what they have now. Also, in addition, the board finds that the benefits to the applicant from granting the requested variance would outweigh the existing, the resulting detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. The board also finds that the variance requested under consideration is the minimal necessary. With that in mind, I recommend we approve AV6-2020.
So I have a motion. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Underwood?
No.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
No.
Mr. Henke?
No.
Mr. Kew?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want any of your paperwork here? So our next application is Brian Hayward, area variance 14-2020, five meter dry.
The applicant proposes to remove an existing 671 square foot home to construct a 1,536 square foot new home with a floor area of 3,072 square feet. Relief requested is for setbacks in floor area per section 179.3-040, dimensional requirements WR. The applicant proposes construction of a single-family dwelling. The new home is to be located 2.9 feet from the side property line where a 15-foot setback on the south side is required. The floor area proposed is 3,072 square feet, 27%, where 2,491.6 square feet, 22%, is required. The criteria for considering an area variance according to chapter 267 of town law requires us to look at certain criteria. In making a determination, the board shall consider, one, whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of this area variance. Staff says that minor to no impact to the neighborhood character may be anticipated. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Feasible alternatives may be considered to reduce the floor area to the compliant. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Relief requested may be considered moderate relevant to the code. Relief for setback is 12.1 feet, and floor area relief is 5% in excess. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Minor to no impact to the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood may be anticipated. And the fifth criteria is whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Staff says that the difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments. The applicant proposes construction of a new home of 1,536 square feet with a floor area of 3,072 square feet. The project involves demo of an existing dwelling, installing a new septic system, and a new well. The plans show the location of the new home's septic and well. Then the Queensbury Planning, Planning Board met, and they, based on its limited review, did not identify any significant adverse impacts that cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal, and that was adopted on August 18, 2020 by a 601 margin.
If you don't?
Tom Center with Hutchins Engineering. Mr. Hayward's here in the audience. Like you said, the project before you is a tear down of an existing structure for a new year-round structure. Mr. Hayward plans on living in here year-round and making this his permanent residence. As you can see by the existing site plan, the, the existing septic system that's there in the neighborhood is within the distance of two-point wells and a drilled well to the south. It's within the 150-foot setback. This project will be an improvement for the neighbor's wells, as well as the new well that we're going to drill across the street, which we received a well variance for from the town board prior to coming here. We have a new compliant septic system to the rear of the structure. We are, we're looking at, we're asking for the 2.5-foot setback to the south property. In discussions with the planning board last night, they asked us if we would talk to the neighbor to the south, which we did. He took no exception to that. You'll hear that. He did have a conversation with staff today, but tonight, we are, we're willing to actually increase that separation distance on the south side to five feet instead of the two and a half that we're requesting. We will extend that to five feet. That'll keep the north side at 12.6 feet. We do have some concerns about trying to split the distance. That was a question last night. As you can see on the plan, there's an existing seepage pit to the north, for the north property, that's on the property line, over the property line in lieu of construction, and trying to protect that system. protect that system that's there. We're worried about going closer and trying to split the distance if we put the house in the middle and trying to do construction and not knowing if it's a seepage pit or a series of seepage pits. We did send a line through to locate that. We don't know if there's anything going further back, if there's another one in there. So we have some concerns about going further to the north. But like I said, we are willing to increase that separation distance on the south to five feet instead of the two and a half, 2.5 that's requested. In regards to the floor area ratio, there is no basement to this structure, so the difference, the additional 500 square feet or so, really is for the garage and a small entryway and a storage area on the second floor. So that allows us, not having a basement, you don't have any storage. This gives us more area for the storage that we can have in lieu of, you know, with no basement. Also, the garage kind of acts in two ways. It gives us our single-car parking space out front and the garage underneath, inside the building reduces the impervious surface that we have to put out in the front, which we have a well to the, to the north in our own well. So we're kind of reducing the impervious area on the lot by having that garage that it's included in the roof space, which isn't, which is less, the stormwater is less of an issue because it doesn't have traffic issues and oils and greases and stuff. So it kind of gives us a double purpose. If there's any other questions from the board, it's a pretty straightforward project.
So do we have questions of the applicant?
So your side yard is going from 2.9 feet to five feet?
The south side's going from 2.5 to five feet.
Okay.
What's the existing?
2.5.
So it's 2.5 right now?
It's 2.5 right now as it is. The neighbor to the south said he didn't have it. We went and talked to him before we even got involved in this project. We said we were going to keep that wall. There was some sought to reuse the building at the time, reuse the foundation. We decided that with the current code, we really can't do that, but we're willing to slide that another two, an additional two and a half feet, so that it's going to be a total of five feet off that south property line.
So, so we'll make that change then to our?
I would propose that change tonight.
Okay.
Would you tell me about the drywall that's right down on the property line?
Yes, we did camera it, or not camera it, but we put a distance finder and tried to locate it. We were able to locate it. It's on the center of the property line. We believe it's, you know, a six or eight-foot seepage pit that's right there. We had discussions with Dave Hatten and the town when we tried to do this. Dave's been out there several times while we tried to work with the neighbor to the north to locate that. There is not much we can do about moving it, relocating it. That's on the neighbor. I'm sure if they ever go to sell it, they'll have to relocate it and go before the town before they can sell that property. So that will get fixed in the future. Our new well will have treatment on it because it's within the 150-foot of seepage pit. So as part of the board of health variance that we receive for the well, they're requiring us to put treatment on our water system.
Tell me about this large seating area. I find this intriguing.
In the front?
I think you have it listed here as?
I'd have to?
Seating area on the second floor?
Mr. Hayward, if you want to drop that?
Well, then he can come up next time. Tell me, I mean, why only two bedrooms?
Because that, the two bedrooms is the criteria for the well and the septic system what we could fit on the site, so we've kept it to two bedrooms.
Thank you.
It's kind of a large house for two bedrooms.
A storage area, no basement, you know, no room to do some of those things. That includes the garage area underneath.
Makes sense not to have a basement.
Excuse me?
It does make sense.
I mean, that's the 500, it's 500 square feet is the difference and that kind of makes up with the garage and the storage areas.
So at this particular time, a public hearing has been advertised, so I'm going to open the public hearing and see if there's anybody who wants to call in on this project. Call us at 518-761-6225. And is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this particular application? Do we have any written correspondence?
There's one. On 8/18/2020, staff Laura Moore received a phone call from Kim Ott at 7 Palmer Drive. She explained that she and Harry Ott approved the Brian Hayward project as proposed and note the neighbor is the one to the south of the project, so that's it.
So we still have to give people from the outside a couple of minutes to call in here, so.
Understood.
There'll be a slight delay.
How about that question about the seating area?
So, hold on a second. So what you'll have to do is wipe down. For the record?
Yep.
So, Ron, ask your question.
The size of the seating area intrigues me.
Yeah, if, with the garage on the first floor, it kind of makes a long, narrow space on the first floor. And you have the part of the first floor would be a kitchen dining area. So that seating area would be, you know, a place for the TV and, you know, a place to sit and look at the river, I guess.
Yeah, I'll hear you nice view of the river.
Yeah, just because the other, off the first floor is such a narrow space. It's only nine foot wide, I think, on the first half of the house.
That's it, huh? So the TV's going up there?
Yeah.
The pool table?
And there's, there's, there's big windows that would overlook the river also.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Brian, what you'll do is wipe down the podium and the microphone.
Oh, you are asleep?
As procedures. Talk to Laura.
That must be, that wasn't number one on your list of procedures. That's very good.
Well, we couldn't do the TikTok dances, so that's next.
Yeah, we took that off.
Okay, so at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing and hold the board and I'm going to start with Jim.
Yeah, I think unlike the first one that we dealt with here this evening, there aren't really any feasible alternatives on this project. I think it's a minimalist approach. I think that, you know, they're trying to fit in on a very small lot and I think that, you know, the issue here, you know, is the floor area ratio as usual. I don't really see that you can make the place any smaller. I don't think it's a grab to build something oversized. I think it fits the size of the lot as it's proposed, so I would be in favor of it.
Kathy?
I agree and I like that change of the planning board has requested. I was considering that one as well.
Roy?
I think it's a good request. I'd be happy with approving it.
John?
Yeah, I agree with my board members, so just definitely it's a very minimal request. I'd be on board with it.
Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be in favor as presented.
Brett?
Thank you.
Are you going to differ from everybody else or are you?
I wouldn't dare. No, this is, this is a well-thought-out project. It's taking a relatively small area. I think it's being considerate of a lot of factors and I would be in favor of the project.
And the way I view it, it's a huge improvement to the neighborhood and a huge improvement to the environment and so I too will support the project. So at this time, I'm going to ask Kathy for a motion here.
I move to approve application AV 14-2020. Kathy's in front of Hayward to tear down the whole of the home by 500. This, we would like to determine the board to gain on the radical change in character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Feasible alternatives are limited as due to the size of the lot. They've been considered by the board. They're not considered in the current situation. The requested variance is not substantial. There is no adverse impact on the physical ground on the condition of the neighborhood or district. The alleged difficulty is self-created. However, the board finds that the applicant from granting the requested variance would outweigh the resulting documents of health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood or community. The neighborhood also finds that their request under consideration is minimal.
Just make a comment that the relief on the one side moves from two and a half feet to five feet.
That would be somewhat of a condition, yes. When you go back and restate that, in terms of the feasible alternatives, the applicant in response to planning board request has made an adjustment to a side area that needs to add to the other side and reducing the one by 2.5 feet and adding it to the other side, which comes closer to the requested, requested.
So the relief is seven feet?
Yes. What's that?
On one side.
No, two point, we're going from 2.5 on the south side to a five-foot setback.
Right. We need, we have relief, so it's 12 feet needed, so it's a relief of seven feet.
Yeah. Right.
That is correct.
So, so Kathy, so now what you'll do is you'll make a recommendation that we approve this.
Oh, I recommend that we approve this application. Thanks.
So we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Okay, so I'm going to interrupt you because that description was, is going to be very difficult to read that through. So my understanding is that that one side that was at, will be from a 2.5. I had it written as 2.9.
Right.
Going to five feet and the relief requested on that south side is simply 10 feet because it's supposed to be 15 feet.
Oh, I thought it was 12 feet. 12 required.
These are 12, it's 12-foot, it's a 12-foot setback due to the width of the lot. These are, these are 50, the required is 50, 12, 12. 2.9, you know what? You're correct. You're correct. So we're, I'm sorry, it was 2.9, yes. That's my fault. It should be five feet. Five feet, it should have been 2.9. That was my, that was my fault.
So that, that, the description can be amended. You can either put it as a description or as part of the condition and I don't care which one you do, but.
So why don't you just modify the description?
Okay.
Because it says on our requirements 12 feet setback, the size. Side setbacks 12 feet. That's what it says on our paperwork, but I mean, you.
I understand if it's.
Well, I could be wrong in our paperwork, that's all.
I think it's 15.
Is it 15?
It's supposed to be 15.
Okay, because it says 12 on our paperwork.
Yeah, it's 15, right?
And so it's, you gave me a description of the. 15 with 15 feet of relief.
Right, in that case, yes.
0.50 is 12 feet. Okay, so it's seven feet of relief.
What is 12?
I thought it was, I thought it was slightly over 50, so that was.
No, no, it's not.
Okay.
50 feet. So seven, seven relief.
So we square?
So let me repeat that so it's clear. The description changes from the new home is to be located 2.9 feet to be located five feet from the side property line where a 10-foot setback is required and so the relief is seven feet.
So we have a motion. Can I have a second? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. McKevitt?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Center, is he in?
No, I got to change him. Thank you.
Okay. As soon as I change him.
So our next application is Frank and Cindy Stacek. Stacek? And it's AV 25-2020.
The applicant proposes a two-story structure of 2,196 square feet. The building uses, includes a two-vehicle garage and living space recreation area on the second floor. The site has an existing 2,898 square foot two-story home with an unfinished basement and attached garage. Also, the site has about a 150-square foot shed to be removed. Relief requested is for a second dwelling to a property where only one dwelling is allowed. Relief required is per section 179-3-040, dimensional requirements. The applicant proposes to construct a second dwelling where only one is allowed. And looking at the criteria, this project may be considered to have impact on the neighborhood where this would be the only site with two homes on one parcel. The feasible alternatives may be considered to construct in additional, in addition to the existing home. Relief may be considered substantial relevant to the code. The relief being requested is 100% to have an additional dwelling on a parcel where only one is allowed. The project as proposed may be considered to have minimal impact on the environmental condition of the site or area and the project as proposed may be considered self-created. The applicant, the staff comments, the applicant proposes to remove, to construct a second dwelling, considered a pool house where a portion of the building is a two-car garage, pool room changing area. The second floor contains a bedroom with a kitchen and sitting area. The plan shows the location of the proposed dwelling in relation to the pool area and the existing dwelling. The project includes removing an existing shed, installation of a septic system with connection to municipal water. And then the Queensbury Planning Board, based on its limited review, has identified the following areas of concern. One, the applicant will reach out to DEC to clarification of wetlands. Two, setting a practice of having two residences on one property. And that motion was passed by 70 margin.
Hey, Don?
Hi, good evening. I'm Dan Ryan. I'm representing the owners and applicant for this project. I'd like to do a brief description of the project, get you familiar with the game plan and the reason they're requesting relief and if you have any answer, any questions. This is in the MDR zoning district. It is an existing developed, single-family dwelling. Purpose of this project is somewhat solving several different problems that they would like to resolve through the development of this project with this addition. Pool house being one of the primary concerns, having a pool house for bathroom use and a multi-use space for the pool deck is something that's desired. In addition to the fact that they'd like to develop a larger garage space because their vehicles don't currently fit in the existing garage, it's not really suitable for like an F-350 truck. So the additional garage space and storage area is needed really for, you know, lawn tractors and larger vehicles. The third item is in hopes of developing some living space, which, you know, obviously could be done with an addition, although it is limited where that could be done with the pool in the back, the driveway on the north side and the septic in the front, the only alternative to do any kind of addition would be on the south side, which is relatively close to the property line and as well as really suitable to solve these other multitude of problems, which is adding a pool house and a garage. So the reason they're proposing a dwelling, it's my understanding that if they were to build this project and have living space without a kitchen, it wouldn't necessarily be classified as a second dwelling. So, you know, I prefer to call this a pool house and garage structure with living space, which is really the ultimate goal. The primary need for this living space is to serve a couple of purposes, one being they do entertain, they do have family and friends that do frequent and it gives them an independent space to stay. You know, with these times of the virus, one of the concerns is you don't have to have your family come and stay in a public facility or hotel and now they can stay home and provide less exposure. So now, I know that times have changed and I think that's something that needs to be considered here with an aging community and people that do have that type of concern. The second reason this living space is important is they do have a family member that, an adult disa, has an adult disability that does require occasional supervision. And so this living space gives them the ability to have some sense of independence while being supervised. And so that's the type of need that they're, and the reason they're presenting this project because the town code does not really address that need. There's many opportunities in this community where, you know, people have aging parents and they want independence, but they also need supervision. And so the code doesn't accommodate two dwellings per se because this is classified as a dwelling. We're here asking for a second dwelling. because this is classified as a dwelling. We're here asking for a second dwelling and for that variance. The MDR district does allow other similar uses. It allows multifamily, duplex, bed and breakfast. These are all types of uses that are permitted in the MDR district. I would somewhat say that this is similar to that, except that it's just really for private use. There is zero intent to use this as rental, to have it in any other way except used by family and friends as needed. The project has limited impact on the neighbors. It's set almost 200 feet or 280 feet off the road, so it's quite a bit setback on the property. If you're familiar with the property, it's a deep narrow, a deep lot with approximately two acres. So the project, I feel, would be very limited in visibility, and it does allow them to build one project and solving a multitude of desires and needs that would help them utilize and maximize the use of the property. The planning board did send a recommendation regarding precedent. I guess I'm not a big fan of this precedent discussion. I don't know that this board has ever approved a project solely on precedent. If you were to do that, you'd be disregarding any merits of the, of the application and the particular need of the applicant. So to say that you can dismiss the application merely by worry of precedent when I don't think this board or the planning board has ever made a decision solely on precedent. So I don't feel like that's a valid concern, and I would rather you look at the merits of the application. I know each application stands on, stands on its own merits, and so I would ask you to do that today. Ultimately, this project could be built, a similar structure could be built without the living space. The planning board last night, one of the topics of discussion was that people do it anyway. Ultimately, when people do this and they're not getting code oversight, they're not getting any building code inspections, they're not getting building permits, the planning board has no say. These are, this applicant has integrity. They're here wanting to build the project with living space, with a kitchen, and so they want to present it and do it the right way. They want to get their building permits and proceed in accordance with the local laws. And so I would hope they would consider all these facts when you're discussing the project, and I would be happy to answer any additional questions you have.
So do we have questions of the applicant?
Yeah. A question for staff. If you had a connecting covered walkway that went from this current building to the new proposed building, would that be, would that settle the question of a second dwelling?
I believe it would, but I think it would cause a concern.
It wasn't for you. It wasn't for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm just thinking in the sense of gray camps in the Adirondacks oftentimes have walkways to connect buildings, and you have a whole series of buildings and on a two-acre lot, I think you're looking at about 14,000 square feet of build-out space, probably over 14,000 square feet of build-out space, so I'm just wondering.
So I understand the question. I'm not going to, I'm not going to do the interpretation.
I think, I think the walkway would have to be heated. It would have to be heated space connecting them.
I don't think so.
Okay.
That's why I'm not doing the interpretation.
I do have a staff question.
Go ahead.
How does this not also fall into a second garage? Is that something this district is requiring?
There's, this is the only garage.
I thought there was an existing...
There is.
There's a garage in the existing home.
So the dw, it's just that the dwelling has a garage in it?
Each dwelling gets one garage. If we have two dwellings, we get two garages.
Oh, okay. All right.
If we didn't have the living space, then we would need a variance for two garages. So I guess it's one or the other.
You'd have to get a variance in the garage if it wasn't the living space anymore?
Correct, yes. That's my, that's my understanding. I guess, I don't know if we'll agree with that.
Now, do they have, they have a finished basement in this house?
I've only been in part of the basement. I know there's a kitchen area in some of the lower levels, but I'm not, I haven't been in the other areas.
You're talking about a 6,000-square-foot house and with a finished basement, which is, with, that's a lot of space. They're saying they don't have enough space now for, that's, that's kind of hard to believe, but...
Mr. Ryan, are you saying that there's going to be a permanent resident upstairs?
No, that is not, it is basically the occasional need. It's my understanding that there is a health issue with a family member and that they occasionally need supervision. I don't know any of the details of that. And the secondary utilization would be for, because they do have occasional gatherings with family, that they would be allowed to stay.
But the supervision, are you talking about like a maid living in these quarters while the mother's in the main house?
No, the actual family member with the disability.
Disability, okay. Where's, how come you didn't put a, an elevator in?
It's not like a physical disability. I believe it's something.
As I get older, the stairs get taller. So you're suggesting, you're stating here that this is intimate use?
Personal, exactly. There is no intent for any other suspicious use in it.
So if we would only give you approval without the kitchen, would you go for that?
That would be the, I guess I'd have to discuss that with the owners. I believe if the variance was denied and the kitchen removed the dwelling definition, they would probably pursue a project without a kitchen. And speaking with the planning board last night, they don't like that because they feel like people put kitchens in eventually anyway, and so ultimately you end up with exactly what you're trying to avoid.
Okay. What is the wetlands issue that, that the planning board didn't like?
We did not have a, because of the virus issues where it's difficult to get field delineations currently by the agencies.
Okay.
So what they've asked is for me to reach out to DEC to try to get some type of correspondence from that because we will be, the structure's about 92 feet from the wetland area. So we're not really close to the wetland in any way, but we would require a permit from DEC.
Because the wet, the wetlands are west of the house, is that what it is?
It's a bike trail, by the bike trail.
It's right along the edge of the bike trail. It's basically the drainage channel caused by the berm that bike trails on.
Thank you. So you have to, you have to chase the DEC for that?
Yeah.
Well, does this staff, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I forgot you were in charge, aren't you? Would this mean that, that, you know, our approval would be based on a DEC findings?
We're not, we're not being asked to, you know, make any judgment in that particular area. So our judgment is strictly second-resident.
Structure.
Thank you.
Other questions? So at this particular time, a public hearing has been advertised, and so I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to invite anybody from the outside to give us a call who's interested in this project, to give us a call at 518-761-8225. And... Is there any written comment? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? So we're just going to have to wait for a couple of minutes here?
No problem.
Do I have a big audience tonight? So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing and poll the board, and I'm going to start with Roy.
Yeah, I would not be interested in approving this. We talked, you talked about setting a precedent. Well, actually, we have one criteria that specifically addresses undesirable changes in neighborhoods. And this would be not undesirable, but it would actually change the character of the neighborhood as well by allowing it. So precedent is a, is actually something that's mandatory for us to look at. So it's not just something that flies by the seat of its pants. We actually do have a set of criteria that we follow. And I also like to point out that if you come back with a different project, you don't get, and you change, you move, remove the kitchen, you're probably going to need another variance for a second garage at that point. So I would be against this.
John?
I agree with Roy. There's no doubt that these people maintain the property very nice. It's, it's a nice piece of property, but if you look around the area, there's no other second family dwellings on a, on a piece of property. And this could, this could open up a can of worms down the road, be an Airbnb, which would be no good, or apartments, and that would be no good. So I would not be, I'm bored with the project at all.
Ron?
You know, this is a two-acre lot. It's an awful big house they have, but it's the second dwelling. And I think if they're, I mean, what are they trying to accomplish here? If they're trying to accomplish a pool house, well, make a pool house. If you're trying to accomplish a second garage, bigger garage, make it a garage. What they look to be, be asking for is an awful lot and too much, and I would not be in favor of it. Sorry. Michelle?
I agree. I think your request is far too substantial. I think your desires can be achieved using the space you already have in your house, plus get variance for the garage and the pool house, which makes sense. My biggest concern is a variance like this, if they run with the land and if you were to grant this with this second structure, then someone else could come in and rent this property. For those reasons, I'm not in favor.
Jim?
Yeah, I don't think there's any doubt that this would be precedent-setting. We've had numerous requests over the past three years for granny apartments, accommodation of relatives and things like that. And I think that's something that the town probably should be looking at long-term for townwide consideration. But at this time, we're not, we're granted, we're supposed to grant minimal, we're granting. And I think what you're offering here is probably within reason on a two-acre lot, given the build-out on that lot, with waterfront, you could build a 22% floor area ratio, which would give you, you know, probably near 20,000 square feet plus of building on this lot. So a house that's there now is a large home, and I think that, you know, you're going to have to go to the town board and see if the town board is amenable to something that's such a great change as requested.
Kathy?
I agree. I, I think there's a great need in the town code for second dwelling minutes, or does that vary because of tangents that, that block, where that's not our purview? We'll sit down for purview and to have denied in the past a second dwelling.
And from my standpoint, I can't support the project either. There's a couple of problems. We've been pretty rigid in allowing second dwellings on a residential property to the fact that, or to the point where we have approved them for a specific period of time for an elderly resident. And as Michelle pointed out, the variance goes with the land. So there's no guarantee that the applicant is going to be there for any length of time, so we can't just consider the desires of the applicant. We have to consider what happens long-term if we do something like this. So you don't have too many yeses on this, so you have a couple of choices. You can table the motion, take a look at some other way to, to go here. You can force a vote, but, you know, that's obviously not going to go well.
What would the temperature of the board be on the multiple garages if the living space was eliminated?
Well, the neighbor has multiple garages, but that was a pretty big battle that they went through to get the, the second garage. We went round and round with, with that at number 60. And it seems to me that that was a pretty good size second garage, and we shrunk it considerably.
We made them remove a basketball court. He removed a basketball court and a shed and...
So a second garage is a possibility there, particularly because it's a fairly deep lot, and there is, you know, it wouldn't be out of character for the neighborhood since the house next door has it. And two doors up, you have a detached garage, which kind of is almost like a, a second garage. So, you know, in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, that wouldn't be out of line. 2,000 square foot would be pretty good. That would be not only a second garage, but it would be larger than a normal garage.
Yeah, I think there's some area restrictions when you look at that as multiple garages. I mean, I guess I would ask for a tabling at this point because I, I need to take this information back and, you know, maybe we want to propose the project amended in some way.
Okay, so how long do you want to consider that?
I think it would be, what's today's?
So your next deadline would be September 15th or October's agenda.
Okay. I don't think that would be a problem if there's going to be an easy change, you know, maybe change of direction, like two garages without living. If it's something more substantial than that, we would probably withdraw the application or resubmit something entirely different.
So I'm going to look for a motion to table this application?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table area variance AV 25-2020. We're going to table it till October, and with submittal date of September 15th?
Correct, and I would say the first meeting in October.
First meeting of October, okay.
So we have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mr. Kiel?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. McHaven?
Yes.
Thank you.
So our next application is AV 24, 2020, Benjamin Arison, Aronson Trust.
The applicant proposes a two-lot subdivision of 10.29 acres. Parcel lot one is 6.1 acres and lot two is 4.22 acres. The project includes a lot line adjustment with a parcel 266 dot 3 dash 1 dash 77 dot 111, from 1.1 acres to remain the same size of 1.18 acres, allowing for lot two to have access to Route 9L. The road frontage of lot two is to be 100 feet where 200 feet is required as the property is a residential lot abutting a collector's slash arterial road, requiring double lot width for residential lots. The relief requested for road frontage is per Section 179-3-040, dimensional requirements, MDR. The proposed two-lot subdivision with lot two of 4.22 acres is to have 100 feet of road frontage where 200 feet is, is required. In looking at the criteria, minor tonal impact and may be anticipated. Feasible alternatives may be considered limited due to the lot arrangement and the existing house and garage location. Request for relief may be considered moderate, relevant to the code. The relief requested is 100 feet. Minor tonal impact to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood may be anticipated. There are no changes to the existing conditions of the property, and the decision may be considered self-created. Staff comments, the applicant proposes to subdivide a 10.29 acres into two lots of 6.1 and 4.22 subdivision separates the existing home and the vehicle storage garage. There are no changes to the existing conditions on either of the proposed lots, and the subdivision plan shows the lot arrangement. And then the Queensberry Planning Board, based on its limited review, did not identify any significant adverse impacts that cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal, and that was approved inadmissively 7-0.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Michael Muller. I am the trustee of the Benjamin Aaron Trust. Benjamin Aronson owns... Benjamin Aronson owns all of the properties subject of tonight's meeting. Our proposal is, for zoning board purposes, I hope to create a lot. Looking at the plan that's on the board in front of me, the top lot has an existing residence on it, and it presently, today, consists of approximately 10.4 acres, 10.3 acres. Would like to take that lot and actually draw a subdivision line through it, just as depicted on that map, so that we would have a residential lot with the existing residence, the northerly lot, and it would consist of slightly above six acres of land. It would have all of the requirements of the zoning district, so there's no relief required there. With respect to the southerly portion of that larger lot, once it's subdivided, that would be 4.2 acres, more or less. And presently, it has a principal building on it, as identified by our code, 3,000 square foot garage. So it meets all of the requirements and criteria of the zone, with the exception of the fact that although the MDR zone has a minimum road frontage of 100 feet, and indeed, this parcel has that, you have multiplier in your code. It says that if you're on an arterial or corridor, that it has to be double. And so Ridge Road happens to be an arterial, and so the requirement would be that it has to be double. Have to consider all feasible alternatives. I have used a ruler and gone around with that multiple times to try to find 200 feet that looks logical and could satisfy the code. And it can't be done. I asked Matt Steves to draw me the highest, best possible line. Quite frankly, for access to the back, you don't need 100 feet, but if 100 feet will do it, that seems to be the most feasible alternative. So in drawing that line, what I did was I took the smaller house that's out front, and it's really not a subject of this request for variance, but it's owned by Mr. Aronson, so it has flexibility. You can use it to reconfigure it, and we did. That is, that the lot is a conforming lot when it was existing, and what we have done is we have achieved the identical area of the lot by taking some of its frontage and dropping it back so that it's a deeper lot. And so that then creates the 100 feet on Ridge Road. I was driving here tonight, and my wife said, "Why are we going to a zoning board of appeals meeting?" And I said, "Because Ridge Road is an arterial road." She said, "What does that mean?" I said, "Well, you have to have twice the amount of road frontage." She said, "Why?" And then it occurred to me that what you want to do on an arterial road is to limit the amount of driveways that are coming out on that arterial road. Then it occurred to me that this driveway has been there since 1950. So it actually is pre-existing circumstance, and all I want to do is utilize it to get to the back of the parcel. There's no other way to get to the back of the parcel. It has no other road furniture. When you consider the factors that are appropriate for an area variance, whether there's an undesirable change that could be produced in the character of the neighborhood if you were to grant this, there's absolutely no changes whatsoever that you can view. That is, if these buildings will exist as they are now, they'll be utilized as they are now. The garage in question on the four-acre parcel was actually built in about, between 2017 and 2018. So it met all of the requirements that are imposed by the modern code in Queensberry. It has the stormwater and erosion control. It has the plantings. It has all of the design features that were required by the code. It has the downward shielded lighting. It's all there. This is a neighborhood that is impacted by Toby's Truck Stop. If you've ever been to Toby's Truck Stop since that opened in about the last 18 months, what you would see on any night, summer or winter, is about six or eight trucks parked right up against this common boundary line between the garage lot and Toby's. It's not a lot that's conducive to residential development. It's a perfect lot, as proposed here, to be a buffer for the nearby residences. And when it comes to changing the character of the neighborhood, I think that if we're allowed to implement this plan, it will actually improve the neighborhood in this respect. I've been driving down Ridge Road to my own home, which is about a mile north of this, for 45 years. And over the course of the 45 years, I have noticed that the school bus barely stops at any houses. I've got a buyer for that little house, and I brought her here tonight so you can see that she supports this plan. She has children. That's a positive change for this neighborhood, and I'm excited about the opportunity to be able to sell that house to her. I can only sell it to her if I can reconfigure the property, because that property's cheap if it doesn't come with the back portion. And right now, it doesn't come with the back portion. It comes with Mr. Aronson's principal dwelling. And I have a buyer for that parcel, too. But he doesn't want the whole, he wants basically six acres with a house, and all the amenities would go with the principal house. So our proposal really is to reconfigure, as you see on this map. And if we can get by the one small impasse here, it would be to allow us the area variance that will grant us the minimum relief, which is, we'll give you the 100 feet, we just can't double it. I think that's my proposal.
So do we have questions of the applicant? So at this particular time, a public hearing has been advertised, and so I'm going to open the public hearing and invite anybody looking in on TV to give us a call at (518) 761-8225, if you have comment on this application. And if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make comment, do so now.
My name is Steph Kosutensky, and I live at 1508 Ridge Road, and I'm in favor of the project. It doesn't affect my life there. Any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
We have time to speak. We're not asking.
Just checking.
Boy, you're really making people believe that, aren't you?
When was that?
It's not me, it's Laura.
When was that one shed put there that's on the setback?
We'll wait for him to come back.
Hi. Hello?
My name's Rory Russell, 1516, new owner, and I have no issue with what Mr. Muller's proposing. Plenty of land for everybody, and it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yeah, I noticed when I was going by, there was a shed there, and it looks like it's really a second garage, because it's got a larger opening than a regular house. There's a shed that's in the setback on the lot one.
Oh, that tiny, tiny little thing? Yeah.
What's out, what's the size of the tiny, tiny thing?
It looks like it's a one-car garage. You can't put a car in it. It's up on stilts. It was used by Mr. Aronson as a place for his lawn and garden tractor. Most recently, it was inhabited by rats and squirrels. It's nothing, it's not much to it at all.
I can't, it's not that old, come on.
Oh, no, it is. Oh, yeah. It's probably 50, 60 years old.
Not the building I saw, okay.
That's a, that little building that's right there where the line intersects?
The building that I looked back at, there's a building there with a garage door opening.
Yeah.
That's not 50 or some odd years old, unless they vinyl sided it just recently?
Oh, yes, they did.
Okay.
That was built with the house in 1960.
Okay, because when I looked at it, it definitely had fairly new vinyl siding.
Probably 15 years old. It was just power washed.
Well, it looked good to me.
It doesn't have.
It looks like a second garage because of the opening of the door.
It is a garage, but you can't park a vehicle in there. It's up on stilts.
So at this particular time, oh, was there anything written?
No.
So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to poll the board, and I'm going to start with Michelle.
I'm in favor of the project. I'm familiar with the area. I've driven by it several times in a week. I think it's not, even though it appears substantial, I don't think it's substantial compared, compared to the area driveways, the residential driveways there. So I am in favor, and I think it's, they've considered every alternative in making this a very well thought-out plan.
Ron?
Yeah, I agree with Michelle. I think it's a, it's a good project. I'd approve it the way it's presented.
John?
Yeah, I agree. There's quite a few homes up the street that are barely, that are 100 feet wide, so with them, just asking for that, it's not a problem. I'd be on board with it.
Roy?
Yep, I'm in favor of the project as well.
Kathy?
Yes, I'm...
Jim?
I don't see negligible changes as a result of the proposed project, finding government.
And I too support the project. I don't think the 100 feet is a, is a big request, and I think it's a good use of the property. So at this particular time, I'm going to ask Jim to make a motion here.
I'd make a motion to approve area variance 24-2020 at 1516 Ridge Road. Having listened to the proposal this evening, the applicant is requesting relief for the road frontage for lot two of the proposed two-lot subdivision. The proposed two-lot subdivision for lot two of 4.22 acres will only have 100 square, 100 feet of road frontage for 200 feet as required by the town code for arterial highways. As far as an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to neighborhood properties, we do not know any, because this is just a semantic change as far as we're concerned. As far as feasible alternatives, there really don't seem to be any. There's been reasonably great changes in the neighborhood of this property with the redo of the gas station adjacent, and this project will not really create any undue hardships on anybody. As far as the requested variance being substantial, 100 feet or 200 feet is required is substantial, but it's not caused by the applicant. The driveway has been there since the 1950s. As far as an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions, we don't know any real change in traffic patterns as a result of the creation of these two new lots. As far as the alleged difficulty being self-created, it's more created by the code being applied for the arterial highway. Can't really go back and change things, but they're preserving what the intent is for the neighborhood in the larger lots. As far as in addition to court finds that the benefit of the applicant for granting their requested grants, I'll always send you detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood community and find that this is the minimum necessary as for the court granting 100 feet of relief. So I'm based upon these findings, I make a motion to approve this area variance 24.
So I have a motion, could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mr. Kuehl?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations. Do you need...
I'll take all you can give me.
So I'll make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye. Would you get some use of that for something?